It's seven oh four. We're going to call the Pearl City Neighborhood Board to order. And the first thing, I want to thank everybody for coming out. It is a little cooler than usual and we expect probably next month it'll be even cooler. So bring your jackets. We'd like to do is start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can have Cub Scout Pack seventy-five come out with the Cub Master. Okay. On our agenda here, I'd like to talk about time limit policy and procedures. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to open the list of participants and click on the raise hand icon in their name. Those that are virtual. When recognized by the Chair, address comments to the Chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please cancel the raise hand sign icon after speaking. Presentations must be kept to ten minutes. Please silence your cell phones. The chat box can also be used as a simple ask questions to the NCO rep there. Board members are required to keep their video active during the board meeting. The board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on the agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Board actions such as draft resolutions and outgoing letters will be posted and were posted on Google Drive. Okay, uh, next thing is, uh, uh, roll call. And the first, we've got Kate Cooney Aguard.
Here.
Rodney A Wong.
Here.
Charmaine Duran.
Here.
Dan Anoy.
Guy Anoy.
Ga- sorry. My brain is not functioning.
You talking about the airport?
No, we weren't out today. Brendan Lee. And Junior's not here. Dan Smith.
Here.
Here.
All right. Tony Pulasco.
Present.
Here.
Hey, myself, Larry Bray and Heidi Weber. All right. So we have our eleven board members. We have ten present. Okay, moving on to the first item here, public safety report. Can we have the Honolulu Police Department up? And welcome.
Good evening. My name is Cade Hashimoto, firefighter one at Station Thirty-Eight Second Launch. These are the stats for the December.
And welcome, before you get started. Those of you know that we recently lost a firefighter. And I'd like to do is take the next fifteen seconds for a moment of silence for our firefighter Jeffrey Fila and also for his family and for the firefighters that were injured on that particular day. So please bow your heads in a moment of silence. All right, thank you.
All right. Ready for your report.
All right, so these are the stats for the month of December. For fire, we had one structure fire and four recent fires. Emergencies, we had one and forty metals, nine motor vehicle collisions, one mountain rescue and three hazardous material incidents. Our fire tips and announcements for this month is appliance and electrical safety. We want to minimize the fire at our home with these tips. Electrical work can perform by qualified person. Check your electric, their craft or damage. Outlets or power strips and use certified power strips that meet safety standards. Extension cord should not be used long term. Design their use only. Follow the manufacturer's instructions. For more information, safety tips, check this, visit fire.honolulu.com. I'll address some of the questions we had from the previous meeting. Question one, is there a site that the public can go to see where pedestrian accidents occurred in the neighborhoods? For information about accidents, please go to the HFD website again at fire.honolulu.com. Click on the news and info tab at the top of the homepage. Go onto the fire response map where the public can search by incident type, date, address or the agencies. Question, what fire tips did each of the have with Christmas trees and lights over the holidays? The recommends that the public never be back on lights and extension cords. Just go to the HFD website again for more tips, questions.
Hey, much board members, any question for HFD? Seeing none, virtual community. Here. Very much, thank you. Have a good night. Okay, moving on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hello. I'm Lieutenant Kiony Hong, sorry joining you via webex. The stats for the month of December. Motor vehicle thefts, there was nine compared to three burglaries, there are nine, also nine in November. Thefts twenty thirty-one in November and car break-in, there are nine compared to five. Total cost for service in this area was one thousand five hundred and sixty-three. I'll just go over a highlighted case that occurred in December. So on December third, twenty twenty-four, at about eight forty-one hours, a male suspect wearing dark clothing and a hoodie entered the Reynolds recycling container located at the Pearl City Shopping Center, pointed a semi-automatic handgun at the employees and demanded money. Suspect grabbed cash bags and fled on foot. Driven by a second unknown suspect. Police responded, initiated the case and one of the witnesses were able to give a license plate for the suspect vehicle. Detectives furthered the case and was able to identify a forty-four-year-old male with twenty-five prior arrests, including two felony convictions as the possible suspect. On December sixth, officers were able to locate this male and arrest him after he was positively identified. This investigation is ongoing. That's one of the highlighted cases that occurred in our area of responsibility in December. I'm not sure if there's any follow-up questions for the last meeting, but if there are, let me know and I can try to answer them. Or if any new questions, I can answer them now.
You're in town. The.
And I'll put it up to my ear. It's kind of cutting off. Yeah, sorry, if anybody else could hear the question, if you can relay it, his mic was cutting in and out. Anybody else could hear it? Oh. Maybe the Chair, I could hear the Chair earlier, if you could relay the question.
Yes, sir, I think the online participants are not able to hear the mic right now.
Okay, Lieutenant, we're back on. We were off for a bit. Rodney, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, hi, um, did you, or did we lose you? At what part did we lose you?
Um, I was on, I just couldn't hear you, but sorry, if you can repeat the question.
Sure.
I tried to.
Uh, we're going to be dealing with a resolution coming up soon that has to deal with shoplifting. So, um, I guess recently in Orange County, California, they instituted shoplifting to start being a felony. Um, and speaking to a retired officer who was one of my classmates. Um, he said, as far as felonies goes, it depends on how much the, uh, crook is stolen. Um, can you elaborate on if you know what the amounts are?
Yeah, so it depends on the offense. There's four theft, shoplifting would be considered theft. So theft first, the amount of property or services would need to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Or there could be certain types of items such as firearms, dynamite, explosives. That would be the highest theft classification we have in Hawaii, which would be a class B felony punishable by up to ten years in prison. Uh, theft in the second degree would be a class C felony. That's the next lower. I believe the amount is seven hundred and fifty dollar threshold. The theft third and theft fourth is misdemeanors. So if we're only talking about felony thefts, the threshold would be greater than seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So who would we have to talk to to lower the amounts to where there would be, you know, put some teeth into that shoplifting bill?
Yeah, so the trouble with that, I have almost nineteen years in the police department. And when I first came in, the amount for felony theft was three hundred dollars, exceeding three hundred dollars. So the law actually was revised in the last nineteen years to make that threshold higher. So I'm not sure if you are able to look at whoever wrote that bill in the first place and see if they're still around or what kind of opposition there was at the time. I believe there was some opposition from retailers, of course, because now shoplifting, you could steal almost twice as much merchandise and it would not constitute as a felony. So, yeah, from my experience, the amount to constitute a felony has gone up.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it because, um, you know, if you want to deter shoplifting, you know, you lower the amount and these three girls who got caught, you know, when the amount was small, but when they found out they were, you know, labeled as felons, I mean, that stuff will follow them the rest of their life.
Yes, yep, that is a deterrent to, uh, you know, constitute as a felony. But, yeah, I'm not sure the exact year, but it did get raised the amount where it to constitute as a felony. So bringing it back down, I'm not sure the process legislators would have to go through.
Yeah, thank you, Rodney, that there'll be a bill that Senator Kino is introducing on shoplifting and this will help with the requirements. Uh, Vice Chair Duran, please.
By any chance, do you know the crime statistics for last year? Or maybe the year before last year hasn't been compiled yet?
For, um, what, what crime, sorry? What crime in particular?
Theft and property crime, maybe?
Oh, hmm, in this area, I can.
Just generally, just generally.
Uh, I could try to do a quick search on my computer real quick from January first to December twenty, um, December twenty twenty-four. Let me just try to put in, uh.
Do you, maybe, um, you don't have to do it now, it's okay. Uh, maybe next time or somebody could email to us because I think every year, um, you know, it's announced. I haven't seen it so far for twenty twenty-four, but I think twenty twenty-three it was down. But twenty twenty-four would be useful to see, but you don't have to do it now, it's okay.
Okay, it might be on the honolulupd.org website if you want to look at it sooner than the next meeting, but I'll try to look it up for the next meeting as well.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. I don't see any other hands up, but community, any questions for HPD?
Chair.
Yes?
Uh, Sakamoto, sorry, I can't find the hen, hen race.
All right, Mr. Sakamoto.
So Chair, thank you, Donald Sakamoto. I live on the winter side, but I have been problems with speeding racing nosy vehicle hot rods coming from west side to east side here. Uh, especially on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, a hundred fifty to two hundred vehicles speeding back and forth on the H three, going back to the west side, east side. Uh, I just wanted to know, when I called nine one one, the phone call went quite a long time, uh, time. I had to wait maybe about twenty-five minutes or so and got rerouted back to the operator. I needed dispatch, they transferred me to the dispatch and the officer, they knew about it. But I just want to know if anything was being done to, on that day, to give citations or find out what was going on because that's the same time the big Eddie was going on, it's not sure. So that's my concern.
Okay, yeah, regarding racing, I do have some stats between the twenty-first and the twenty-third. I know you mentioned the twenty-second, but the areas was H one West Pearl City, H one East I Aia, H one West Kaumanu, and there was a total of, um, two arrests, three arrests for excessive speeding over eighty miles an hour. Um, one arrest for driving while intoxicated. And then citations for speeding over thirty miles an hour over the posted speed limit, reckless driving two times. So, yeah, there were some citations given in that twenty-first to twenty-third time period. I can read off the report numbers if you need it, but there were, yeah, there were some enforcement done.
Yeah, besides that, there's also motorcycles, but kudos for you, whatever you folks doing to help our district for. Yeah, whatever you can do, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Guy, go ahead.
Yeah, um, Lieutenant, you know, I noticed that, uh, see the other day or a couple of days, I can't remember if it was a year or two ago, there was an overturned car that almost went into the river right by children's house. Are you aware of that?
Um, do you remember the day by chance, the date? Because I, I may have been off, so it's not at the top of my head, but I could look it up.
I think it was Monday, yesterday. It might have been yesterday or the day before, yeah, I can, I mean, it was, it was so astonishing, you know, to see a car that turned over and was right at that bridge by a children's house. Right around the bend, coming down from Palisades.
Yeah. Another area, I don't see any, uh, highlighted cases regarding that. Did it make the news, do you know, or you just happened to get?
No, no, but that's the second time I saw a car go into that area. And, um, man, uh, yeah, it's pretty hairy to see a car turned over. And it's kind of like past the bridge, you know, like in, like about a foot past the bridge, you know, so it's like.
Mm-hmm.
And if they go any further, they're going to go on to the river and, um, you know, it might end up in a fatality.
Yeah, one good thing, I guess, looking at it, is that it must not have been a critical or fatal, fortunately. But, yeah, that area, that ban, if you're taking it too fast, you probably could lose control. So I'm not sure what maybe safety devices or signs or what they could do to make it a little safer. But, yeah, that is a kind of dangerous turn if you take it too fast.
Yeah, maybe put up one of those, um, speed control things that, uh, you know, that in that trailer, I guess, uh, that shows your speed like that. Funny, and you put those things up, I'm not sure if it's taking a picture or whatever, but, uh, people tend to slow down when they see that.
Okay, I can, um, contact our community policing team and see if there is a safe area to put up one of those for a little while. That's a good suggestion. I'll try to contact them.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Guy. Uh, community, any questions for HPD? Hey, hearing and seeing none. Uh, Lieutenant, thank you very much and, uh, be in touch with you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to a public testimony, three minutes. Is there any resident that would like to speak on any issues? Okay, seeing none. Okay, we'll move on to board business. Uh, first item that we have board business, uh, we have board member Brendan Lee has missed three meetings and our neighborhood plan formalities, uh, we're supposed to review and, uh, and determine if he can keep him on the board. What's that? Is there somebody there named Maraku? Rico?
Mariko.
Yeah, is this a public concern?
Yes, I have a public concern.
We'll bring you in right now, public concern, before we get in the rest of the board business. So what do you have, ma'am? Thank you.
Uh, my question is about wooded areas that are outside of the zone map. Um, whose jurisdiction is that? Because I'm wondering if you would propose, I'm a employed unhoused person and I live outside of the zoning map. Would Pearl City be willing to answer saying a official amnesty zone for unhoused people?
Yeah, ma'am, I'm having, uh, my apology, I'm having an audio issue here where I can't really understand what you just said.
Uh-oh.
It's, it's, it's the audio itself, but there might be a board member here can interpret for me.
Mariko, I think you're asking whose jurisdiction the wooded area outside of the zone is? I think that's what I heard. Which zone are you referring to?
Well, just, um, outside of the official Pearl City residential area. So.
Can you give us an example of wooded area that you're referring to?
Like if you go beyond Sam's Club and up that hill, there's a bunch of unhoused people there. Uh, if you go outside of, um, the Marshes area in Neil Blaisdell Park, a bunch of people live there. A bunch of people live, um, on the way to, like, on the way to Waipahu and the wooded areas there. I'm just wondering if it's, like, we always talk about what we don't want the homeless to do, but we never talk about what we do allow them to do. And so I, I would like some kind of official amnesty zone somewhere in the state. And since I live in Pearl City, I started here.
Yeah, right, right now, as far as your, as far as your concerns for the homeless in those wooded areas along the bike trails, they're along the, uh, the hillsides surrounding Pacific Palisades. Uh, I mean, it, it's ongoing right now. There are times that the city does do sweeps to clear out areas, but, uh, in those high dense wooden areas there, uh, there's probably nobody doing anything unless there's a major complaint or it's a safety issue. But, uh, you know, we all concerned about our homeless. You know, we, we need to find homeless for them, but at the same time is we need to make sure it's safe for the community. Uh, I'm sorry, I can't answer your question in more detail than that.
So.
Yeah, can you do me a favor? Can you leave your info in chat? And that way you and I can actually get on the phone and I can, because I'm having a hard time understanding you and I apologize.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mariko. Okay, moving on, board business. Uh, and of course, uh, you know, our requirements are with the neighborhood plan and the Neighborhood Commission Office. If we miss, uh, three meetings, the formalities is that the board member gets a reminder letter and also the board has to take action and decide whether to retain the board member, uh, on, on the board itself.
Point, I have a point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
Could I have the NCO clarify, um, where, where and what the plan says about action?
You're right, you're correct.
That's two one four one zero six. An absence and removal process resignation.
Okay, well, we're required. And the other thing is I've already talked to, uh, board member Lee.
Yeah, I know. What, what is it? I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I can't, I just, I didn't hear what it says.
Okay, as far as what action needs to be taken?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, because I have some concerns about this part of the plan.
Okay, inform, uh, it says, uh, inform the member that the board's next regular meeting, the board will consider whether to remove the member based on the member's absences and declare the seat vacant. If the Chair asks for a motion to declare the seat to be vacant and none is made, the provisions is that, uh, section have been fulfilled. A motion to retain a board member is never in order. And, uh, anything else you need?
Yeah, I, I would like to, I would like to move to file this because I think there's some issues with this process. So I would like to move to file it as, and that be our action.
You, you want to make a move to file it?
I would like to file this matter and move forward with the action, the rest of the actions. Because I think there's some issues with this body removing a member. And, you know, I've shared this already with you, it's not about the Chair, I adore the Chair. I just think that, um, it's a little premature. It doesn't take into consideration human beings and I just don't, and, you know, people select us. Um, and as somebody who's had surgery, will have surgery shortly, I'm a little concerned that we might, that this, that that part of the plan was meant to punish boards that always lose form and this is not one of those. So I would like to move to file it.
Yeah, and we're not planning any vacate because I was going to recommend, because I've already talked to board member Lee. You know, he's been exceptional board member all this time and all of us, and Vice Chair, I agree with you. All of us are community leaders on this board and there are times we have to prioritize. And I expect everybody here, number one priority is your family. And when you got family events that you need to be at, you got to do it. The thing is though, uh, I'd like to recommend to the board and I need a motion to retain a board member Lee on our board.
Point of, point of order, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
The provision that you just read specifically says that a motion to retain me on the board is out of order.
I'm going by what.
So either, either the board takes action to remove me or does nothing. You don't need a motion to retain me, I'm automatically retained. But I believe that there's a motion that's begging a second from the Vice Chair just to file the issue, which would mean essentially we're moving on.
Okay, do I see any motions?
There is a motion that's begging a second to file the matter.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, we keep him on the board.
All in favor of filing now?
Okay, to file, okay.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Different from what I've done in the past. Okay, moving on, uh, to, uh, resolutions. Uh, we are in a legislative period. We're trying to get in sync with our senators and representatives and the city council moving forward. And of course, normally, uh, our Vice Chair, she led the way for all our legislative requirements that we've done, uh, since the November. So our officials have all our priority list of things we want. But the thing is, we want to back it up with resolutions on a few. So for the first one, uh, resolution that we have to present, and that is, uh, is that from you, Cooney? That's on fireworks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't believe your mic is on, we can't hear you down on this.
I'm sorry, can you give me up a little bit? Yeah, thank you, Brendan. Okay, can you, can everybody hear me? Okay. All right, Cooney, can you present this resolution?
Sure. Entending this state legislature to do one, increase fines, common penalties and jail time for violators of the fireworks law and two, empower, train and certify citizen, community policing and neighborhood security watch volunteers to help with the enforcement of illegal aerial explosions and homemade pipe bombs that are used to terrorize our neighborhoods. Whereas Hawaii residents continue to be negatively impacted by illegal aerial fireworks and very loud, very loud explosions at all, at all hours of the day with these explosions interfering within all neighborhoods severely causing sleep deprivation for the elderly, our children, workers, veterans and pets. Whereas another grave concern is many residents who do not care about the safety of stockpiling explosives in their homes, garages and vehicles create a great risk for an inadvertent and or careless potential huge explosion that could take innocent lives of families and individuals to include massive damage to properties surrounding the neighborhood as evidenced recently in Hawaii with the death of four individuals and several other people severely burned and injured. Be it resolved that the Pearl City Neighborhood Board number twenty-one is requesting our state legislatures, our state legislators to amend our current fireworks law and authorize for the employment of using citizens, community policing and neighborhood security watch volunteers to work with HPD for the enforcement of illegal fireworks and mitigate the loud explosions our community has been enduring these past years. The situation continues to worsen and be it further resolved that Pearl City Neighborhood Board requests the Hawaii District Court improve the timelines for neighborhood residents to litigate potential lawsuits against neighbors and individuals who violate the law in order to collect punitive damages for the terroristic loud explosions gravely impacting the health and safety of their families and pets with the use of eyewitnesses, of eyewitnesses' reports, uh, coupled with video evidence, signed affidavits by neighborhood and HPD police reports. for each terroristic loud explosion event that will support the civil and possible that will support the civil suit and possibly lead to criminal prosecutions. And be it finally resolved that copies of the resolution go to all the important people.
Thank you. Thank you, Cooney. Okay, can I get a a motion? Okay, do I have a second? Okay, in discussion? Anybody want to add anything to this? Okay, if not.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I would just add that board members and the community have not seen this evening news. There was another critical injury today off of fireworks.
Charmaine.
Thank you for putting this forward. And yes, I was going to say someone else passed. So thank you for doing this.
Hey, thank you. Okay, roll call vote, Cooney? Yes, Rodney? Yes, Charmaine?
Aye.
Yes, Guy?
Aye.
Yes. Brendan? Yes. Dan? Yes. Nate?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Heidi? We have ten yeses for the record. Okay, and Vice Chair, I'm going to pass the gavel to you virtually because the next thing is, as we because our board will be providing testimony through fireworks, uh, the bills that'll be going through the legislature. And again, trying to offer some of these solutions and hopefully they'll get into law. But the next step is last night, some of us had met with Congressman Case and we had a chance to talk about illegal aerial fireworks. So the next thing the Pearl City Neighborhood Board is doing officially is we're going to request the federal level law enforcement to interdict and illegal aerial fireworks shipments to the Hawaiian Islands. Congressman Case, right now, we're asking him, the Pearl City Neighborhood Board is requesting that he again to reach out to the respective federal agencies, but with the new President Trump cabinet and ask for the assistance to initiate national level task force to include our intelligence agencies. They need to identify who is shipping these containers of illegal fireworks and other contraband to Hawaii, and then they can put a stop to the organized crime operation that has negatively impacted thousands of Hawaii families because of loud explosions and the threat of another neighborhood disaster of exploding warehouse housing of illegal fireworks. I am confident that I that if an interdiction plan is developed by the federal agencies to take down this operation in the US mainland, it will save Hawaii law enforcement agencies money, time, resources, because they won't have to inspect thousands of shipping containers arriving at our port facilities. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the letter? Who's that? Heidi? Do I have a second? Brendan, second. Okay, roll call vote, Cooney? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a discussion? Anything want to add to the letter? Hey, hearing none? Cooney?
Yes.
Yes, Rodney? Yes, Charmaine?
Aye.
Yes, Guy?
Yes.
Yes, Brendan? Yes. Dan?
Yes.
Yes. Nate?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Yes. Myself, yes. Heidi? Okay, we have ten yeses. Okay, moving on to the next resolution. This has to do with shoplifting. Rodney, will you please present the resolution?
Urging the state legislature to, number one, increase penalties for the offense of shoplifting theft from our local businesses. Two, require retail stores to improve customer accountability by screening merchandise receipts at store exit. And three, make it easier for merchants to prosecute shoplifters on high value items. Whereas several local Hawaii businesses are experiencing a high amount of smash and grab shoplifting thefts from thieves who are willing to take a risk of walking into stores, taking items and not paying for the merchandise, and then walking out the doors of these businesses without fear of being engaged, caught, or prosecuted. And whereas the mindset of thieves and young people seeing how easy it is to shoplift sends the wrong message to other people who may take the risk to shoplift. And whereas many of many of our local, of our local businesses have had to raise their prices on merchandise to cover for the monetary loss of shoplifting impacting our residents and families who are already struggling to feed their families. And okay, be it resolved that the Pearl City Neighborhood Board Number Twenty One is requesting our state legislatures to amend the current shoplifting laws by increasing penalties with increased fines, community service, and jail time. And be it further resolved that the Pearl City Neighborhood Board Number Twenty One requests that the state legislature to encourage stores to upgrade their physical security practices, hire security personnel to apprehend and hold suspect shoplifters for Honolulu Police Department officers and be willing to prosecute shoplifters for high value items. And be it finally resolved that those copies of this resolution be forwarded to all state legislature senators and representatives, mayor of Honolulu, Honolulu City Council, Honolulu Police Department, city prosecutor, and all neighborhood board chairs.
Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you.
I get to move? Okay, Cooney's, Cooney moves? Anybody second? Okay, Rodney? Okay, any discussion? Charmaine?
Thank you, Chair, for drafting this one as well. You were really busy. I'm going to support this reso, but I just wanted to note for the record, you know, there are some constitutional restrictions on you know, crime and punishment and unusual punishment and all of those things. And additionally, you know, some of these are young people. And I know young people who were ridiculous when they were young and today and felon, made felons and today are upstanding citizens. And I just want to make sure that my concern that we might swing too much back one way because actually in the seventies, eighties, and nineties, we sent a whole bunch of people to jail. We made a whole bunch of people felons and now we have overcrowded prisons and we never really fixed any of that. So I'm going to support this because it's you and I know everything you do is from the heart. But I just wanted to note that there are some restrictions and I do have a lot of concerns.
Yeah, Vice Chair, thank you, and I totally agree with you. And we'll be following these bills through the legislature. I'll be providing testimony. And basically what you said, I'll remember to make those points clear. Okay, if there are no other discussions, I'd like to get a roll call vote. Cooney?
Aye.
Yes, Rodney? Yes, Charmaine?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Yep, Brendan? Dan?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Heidi? We have ten yeses. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next resolution. Heidi, can you please present your resolution?
Check. Sit on. Urging the state Hawaii and the city and county of Honolulu to expedite the planning of a Palisades emergency access route and a Pearl City Community wildfire protection and evacuation plan. Whereas in the year 2023 and 2024, the Pearl City Neighborhood Board Number Twenty One addressed the issue of the lack of an emergency bypass road to be used to evacuate Pacific Palisades residents in the event of a natural disaster blocking Komo Mai Drive or when first responders suspend movement via Komo Mai Drive. And whereas Pearl City's Pacific Palisades neighborhood broke ground in 1960 and now contains approximately 2,000 homes, a population in excess of 8,000, as well as adjacent agricultural uses exhibit A. And whereas there is a single access exit road, Komo Mai Drive, for this community shared by both emergency response and public vehicles. Whereas community resiliency requires effective disaster and emergency preparedness as well as long-term collaboration between local governments and the community at large. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Pearl City Neighborhood Board Number Twenty One urges the state of Hawaii and the city and county of Honolulu to mutually protect the residents of Pearl City community by executing the following. One, planning and design for an emergency access route to support the Pacific Palisades neighborhood in the event of an emergency. And two, commissioning a study with computer modeling to determine the time required for a safe, complete evacuation and creating formal evacuation plans. And three, conduct a community risk assessment and community risk reduction plan for areas in Pearl City that border the Eva Manana Forest Reserve. And four, develop a community wildfire protection plan. And five, replace and maintain emergency sirens throughout Pearl City. And be it further resolved to ensure community commitment and involvement, the board requests that the city and county of Honolulu, as part of the planning and preparedness stages for the emergency access route and any evacuation plans, carry out the following. One, extensive community outreach and engagement. And two, amend the public infrastructure map, whether required by ordinance or not. Three, work with the Oahu Metropolitan Organization to take any necessary steps to qualify for federal funding. And be it further resolved that the Pearl City Neighborhood Board expresses support for SB 390, Elefante, and also urges our state legislators and city council to draft bills or resolutions for this next legislative period. And be it finally resolved that electronic copies of this resolution shall be forwarded to the governor, all state legislators, mayor, all members of the Honolulu City Council, director of the Department of Emergency Management, HFD Fire Chief, HPD Chief of Police, and all neighborhood boards.
Okay, can I get, can I get a motion to move?
I have a point of order.
Go ahead, Charmaine.
Sorry, Chair, you're making me work so hard today. Okay, so we need to amend the original reso, which is actually on the agenda. So let's amend, try to at least make a motion to amend to that second draft, which Heidi just read beautifully. And then we can move to discussion because the agenda is part of the sunshine law and right now it says something a little different. So move to amend.
Do I get, okay, Charmaine moves to amend. Do I have a second? Mending the original resolution that was posted.
Oh, point of order, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So we have to move and second the the resolution to bring it before the body. And then Vice Chair can move to amend. But right now, this resolution isn't before the body. So Heidi reading it is a motion to to approve. I second.
Thank you.
So now, so now she can move to amend.
Charmaine?
Move to amend. Thank you.
Got a move to amend? Do we have a second? Okay, that was Cooney? Oh, Rodney, I'm sorry. Rodney? Okay, roll call vote.
Point of information, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
What are we amending?
Oh, we're mending the technical details that were added to the resolution at the end. That action list? That's the, that's the main part. Go ahead, Charmaine.
Thank you. So the original resolution leaned a little bit more towards expediting construction and we're kind of not there yet. So the amendments kind of bring in line what we've done so far, which is request planning with what the Senate and legislature have done over the years and kind of go step by step. So those, that's actually what the amendments are.
Okay, any other discussion? Rodney?
So, Board Member Lee and Board Member Duran, have you folks actually looked for any viable routes from Palisades to, you know, exiting Palisades as a route? Because the only one that I see is at the end of Waiana Street. And at that Waiana Street is a private gate. And from what I was understood, I mean, I haven't looked at it. But I see the gate there and that, I think, I wish the gentleman from the Board of Water Supply was here because if I'm not mistaken, that's part of the board, the water meters or something that they look up there. So have you folks looked at any viable routes that could be taken from Palisades?
Do you want to go first, Charmaine, or you want, Charmaine, or you want me to go first?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So you're correct about that road on Waiana. It's a the right of entry is to Board of Water Supply and Hawaiian Electric. There, to my understanding, in my 55 years of living in Palisades and just being looked at over all that time, there is no viable route. Waiana, Waiana, the reason why they say Waiana because there is kind of a dirt road that connects it and it comes up to just below Apoi Poi up onto Komo Mai. And the reason that's not viable is because that goes within the fire that danger zone that's considered a danger zone for fire. So if there was a forest fire that would necessitate an evacuation of Palisades, that road would be inundated by fire. That wouldn't. The other one was there was a proposal made in the seventies about building a bridge across the YPO, not the YPO, the going over to Highlands. So towards Pearl City High School across from Palisades. And that was nixed because of cost, the cost that it would to build that bridge to go to go across. And I believe the last meeting that I attended, which was four meetings ago, I don't remember which agency it was, but they talked about this because we asked then about an exit and that's, they gave those same things that I just talked about.
All right, well, board members, thank you for the history because a lot of this, this is first heard for me. But we definitely need to move forward. We need to have an emergency action plan and, and also with our senators and representatives to keep looking at possibilities down the road. And also, as Charmaine said, Opa, these kind of things get brought up every, every time, but trying to get federal money is really tough. Ma'akakila's been waiting for many years for their, their emergency bypass road. And it hasn't happened, but we got to keep pressing. It's the right thing to do. So if there are any discussions, I'd like to get a make a motion to. Yes, but there is no amendment on this one. No, that's a resolution. I didn't know we had an amendment on this. Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm jumping to, I'm jumping to the other one. No, I just got. Okay, so can I get a motion on the approved amendment? Okay, all right. Do we need to vote now? Okay, Cooney? Rodney? Charmaine?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Yes, Brendan? Dan?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Yes, Tony?
Yes.
Yes, myself, yes. Heidi? Okay, we have ten, ten yeses. Okay, okay, the last resolution, Vice Chair, can you please? Okay, we got to do. If there are no objections, we'll go ahead and and the resolution will be approved with amendments. Okay, Vice Chair, you want to present the last one?
Okay. This resolution encourages all businesses and community-based organizations to become active partners and stretching the Pearl City District. to become active partners in stretching the Pearl City District. It encourages, um, all of us, including this board, to participate in either the city or state of Hawaii's adopt a park, adopt a string, adopt a block, adopt a highway, and, um, participate in cleaning and maintaining our trailheads, which I think we have too. Um, it also requests from members to submit any type of organization that might be interested. So I've made contact with several, I hope that you will. Uh, and before I motion, I don't want to say that, um, Pearl City is lagging other communities when it comes to adoption and volunteer maintenance of facilities, but we probably are, move to approve.
Okay Rodney second, any discussion? Seeing none, okay, call for the vote. Cooney? Yes Rodney? Charmaine?
Hi.
Yes Guy?
Yes.
Brendan? Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Heidi? We have eleven yeses, okay, great. All right, board business is completed, thank you board, uh, for all these things that we got through. Uh, moving on to our government officials. Uh, we're honored here today, we got Mr. Jeff Hickman finally back again, thank you.
Thank you Chair and Board. I just got to say before I get started, it's an honor to see this level of government in action and I live in this district, so thank you for what you do. Um, the governor is not in the state, he's in DC, he's going to testify uh, over one of the nominations. But he does as if, has his finger on what's happening here in Hawaii. And one of them is the, it just came out today as the federal funding and grants being, uh, I guess suspended, um, via the new administration. So we are working on that, if you're not familiar with that, there's a really good press release and it quotes all the different state departments that are affected and why. Um, and then later in the afternoon, it came out that a judge is holding it up. So right now it's on hold, but that's, uh, something we're keeping an eye on. And another big issue coming up is a storm. So we want to make sure everybody prepares for the storm, the flooding. You know, I, I've heard it here, it was either in October, uh, the flooding that has happened. So we can only prepare so much, we know that, but please do what you can, the two weeks worth. And if you can go, I'll share this with the, uh, chair as well to post in the minutes. The DOD.hawaii.gov/hawaii, H-I-E-M-A, Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, they have the tips and resources on there, easy checklist to follow, uh, as a resource. So I'm, I'm done with that report, uh, I can take anything back, I will. I wrote down notes about that resolution because Hawaii Emergency Management falls under the State of Hawaii DOD, which is my, uh, department. So I'll kind of give my, my, uh, adjutant general, Stephen Logan, and the director of Hawaii Emergency Management a heads up that that's coming. Um, and it's right in line with, I saw, um, Cooney talk about why and I has that emergency access. So this is kind of fresh, so I'll make sure that, um, they're tracking that and look for that resolution in the notes when it comes. Anything for the governor, Mr. Chair?
Okay, thank you Jeff, that's all good stuff and, uh, yes, we, we need to heed the warnings here that will probably be coming out tomorrow evening with the storm ahead of us. Uh, board members, any questions for the governor's rep? Charmaine?
I just, I, I wasn't sure who to ask this, so I'll just leave it with you. Recently, um, our Palisades community had contact with the homeless outreach coordinator and they did excellent work. Um, and so they really do a good job. They went above and beyond to make contact with community, with the homeless community living in the forest reserve. When I was doing the resolution for the trails, I spoke with, um, DLNR. Um, and they said they had not received the information of, that there might be people who are living in the trail area. So I just wanted to share that with you and maybe some communication between, um, the coordinators and the state offices might be useful to get more resources out there and so forth. Some organization might be needed.
I'll, I'll definitely take that, um, back, um, and make sure the DLNR is able to touch base with the homeless outreach coordinator. Thank you, that, I'm, I'm that person.
Any other questions? And I know Mr. Hickman, uh, vice chair, and that we've talked about this. I, I'm really concerned about the homeless that are in the peripheral around Pacific Palisades. I, I really think that if we equip DLNR with drones, they could really cut their timeline down to isolate where these encampments are and then go ahead and, and eliminate them each one at a time. But we got to get to those potential wildfire, uh, sources. We've, we've got to identify them and get them out of there. Just a matter of time, okay, uh, anybody, anybody else? Guy, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, uh, hi Jeff. So, um, last night, uh, I saw on the news, you know, after that, uh, big rain out that the Ala Wai Canal is flooded with, uh, incredible amount of debris, et cetera like that. So I guess, uh, this is, um, in coordination, you know, like the homeless situation here in Pearl City, I A Wai Papi area like that. You know, if we get flooded like that, does this mean that, you know, uh, because these homeless people are in that, um, those zone areas like that, that potentially that waste is gonna go down and God forbid it piles up in the Pearl City Shopping Center area and, um, it overflows. And remember, uh, several years back when, um, Noialani Street got inundated, yeah, because of debris, et cetera like that. So I guess, uh, it is a great concern and I guess proof of the pudding is, uh, the, uh, situation in Ala Wai Canal that, um, occurred, yeah, recently, that's just, uh, the other day, I believe, thank you.
Um, sir, can I ask, uh, what is the name of the river or the water source that reaches the Pearl City Shopping Center?
Uh, that, that, I'm not sure.
That's a covert.
Over, okay.
Over and, uh, yeah. But I think it, um, it's a couple canals, you know, I mean, like one is, uh, right near that, uh, Pearl City Community Center where you folks are right now. So just to be sure that, you know, debris is cleared out, et cetera like that and, uh, yeah, somehow as, um, Chair Verri had mentioned, perhaps have a drone to take a look at, uh, the situations in those, uh, coverts and canals like that, to ensure that it's cleared up. And I brought this up, um, let's see, uh, several months back in terms of, um, the, uh, river that, uh, is in back of Children's House, just to be sure that, you know, it's free of debris, et cetera like that, because, uh, you know, that bridge goes out for whatever funny reason. I mean, um, you know, several thousand homes in Palisades, we would just be stuck here.
Okay, where, where is Children's House?
Komo mai Drive, at the bottom of the hill, uh, that, uh, fronts Palisades.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guy, thank you very much because those are important points, but, uh, Jeff, just to let you know that, uh, I predicted if we do have a major, uh, long-term flood situation for Pearl City, the Waava stream will take out Cam Highway Bridge, that's by Leeward Community College. And if we go back to, uh, nineteen ninety, that's, that's when we had a really bad flood, it actually flooded out Pearl City Housing, uh, Lahua, that whole area, uh, is because there was so much debris that got backed up by the bridge, it just overflowed. And if, every time I drive past there, I always think the worst case scenario, if you take a look at that, you'll see all the vegetation that has not been cleared and we don't know how many shopping carts are in there. So, but anyway, it's kind of late, it's Thursday night, coming up.
Okay, for this one, but no, we, I can, I can put it down as a no to make sure that DLNR, uh, gets this.
Yeah.
If that's their, if it's their line.
Any other questions, community? Okay Val, we got, uh, one online. Val, uh, Tuiloma?
Aloha, uh, Valerie Tuiloma from Kalahua West of Oahu Outreach. Um, just so everyone is aware, we, we do work with DLNR, um, HPD. Um, when there are homeless situations, we've been doing some sweeps. In fact, we have one coming up on the thirtieth that is going to be involving Waipahu, Pearl City, Haleeva. Um, and just so everyone knows, a drone is amazing. That's how we find a lot of encampments in most of our regions, I'm going to be honest. Um, our most recent one that we had a concern about was Kipapa Gooch in the Middleani area. Um, where you'd have to hike pretty kind of far to get to the people that are hiding in the back that, that weren't found by representatives the last time we went, um, which was like a week ago. Um, when there are extreme weathers, our teams go out and warn our unsheltered population in all those flooding areas when, when there are heavy rains and it calls for evacuation, we are all on call. And we do open up shelters and, um, emergency, um, what do you call shelters for the time being until the storm has passed. Um, after it's passed, then unfortunately, people are transported back to those areas. But for that time being, we try to reach out to all of our clients and unsheltered populations that, that aren't our clients to just let them know, hey, the storm is coming. We try to prepare them in advance. Uh, if anybody's willing to, um, partner and work with our outreach, please let me know. I can put my name and, and information in the, in the chat again.
Yeah Val, thank you very much for the heads up on that. And yet the, the other thought that crossed my mind is, uh, there are homeless right now living underneath the Waimalu Bridge. Uh, I'm real, really concerned about that situation because, uh, you know, with a flash flood, it's going to wipe them right out right away. HPD, I'll, I'll make sure that I give HPD a call on this one.
Chair?
Any, either, uh, Guy, you got your hand up?
Uh, yes, please. Uh, yeah, uh, Val, yeah, that was a good point and I, I'm so happy that you folks are using drones because, um, so last night's news or the night before, they showed the, uh, flash flood and I was astonished to see that water just hit that embankment for the river. And the dark water must have been at least six to eight feet high. There's stone on earth that they're going to survive, they're going to get washed down. So, yeah, thank you very much for, um, the diligence and, um, it's, and hopefully I can incorporate more of the, uh, the drones, et cetera like that. And then, uh, maybe in, uh, Jeff Hickman's area where, um, they can engage, uh, better AI situations to help locate these people, you know, I mean, um, especially, you know, with, with the AI software that actually can help anticipate and, and, and locate, um, these, these people to, to get them at least safe, like you had mentioned, yes, thank you.
Thank you Guy. Okay, uh, any other questions for Mr. Hickman? See and hearing none, thank you Jeff.
Thank you guys.
Take care. Okay, moving on, Mr. Casey Abbe.
Good evening Chair.
You got the floor.
Okay, um, good evening, um, and happy new year Chair Verri and members of Pearl City Neighborhood Board. Uh, Casey Abbe from the State DOT Highways Division. At the November's meeting, I mentioned that I received an email from Senator Elefante about the overgrowth of vegetation along the Pearl City on and off ramps. During my field investigation last week and talking to our district maintenance, due to the shortage of manpower resources, our landscaping crew focused on cutting back the overgrown areas that could block the motor sites distance, which was mainly along the median areas. Other areas like the shoulder area that do not affect a motor site distance will be addressed later. Uh, we thank the board and the public for their patience due to our manpower shortage. At the November's meeting, there was a question about installing noise cameras near the H3 tunnel. And the risk question, I wanted to know what the status, since you talked to our director. A twenty twenty-three legislator, uh, passed Senate Bill five eighty-eight relating to excessive noise. The law requires the state highways division to implement a pilot program to use noise detection cameras to address excessive traffic noise in urban areas with population of greater than five hundred thousand people. This slide, uh, shows the ten locations in Honolulu and the Kanoi District selected by the state highways with input from the State Department of Health and the city county of Honolulu and a private engineering consulting firm who is assisting with implementing this pilot program. Initially, we identified twelve locations, but due to the funding limitations, reduced the locations to ten. The four locations, locations one, two, three, and ten are within the state jurisdiction that includes the H3 interchange, while the remaining six locations are within cities, cities jurisdiction. This pilot program will not issue any citations like our red light program. This program is to study the technical aspects of implementing these noise cameras and to see if the data collected would stand up in court if the DOT, with support from the public and elected officials, decide to move forward with issuing citations in the future. The project has been advertised and we are in the process of warranting contract. I'll provide an update of the project at a future meeting. I want to thank Senator Elefante for the email and this picture about overgrown interest on Kalanohi Street overpass. Our work with our maintenance crew to remove the charts and cut back the overgrowth. On December tenth, I received a suggestion about converting a third lane of Kamaua Highway going eastbound into another left turn lane onto Acacia Road. The proposal would convert the internal left turn lane to a U-turn only lane and have the second and third lane be left turn lanes onto Acacia Road. This would require us to convert the existing right turn lane into Home Depot, into a combination right turn and true lane, so we can maintain the three other, uh, three true lanes. I'm working with our traffic branch and report back at a future meeting. And, oh yeah. And finally, on January twentieth, Senator Elefante forwarded me an email from a constituent expressing her safety concerns at the intersection of Waava Road and Ala Eki Street near Leeward Community College. The person is concerned with motors from Leeward Community College and the skyline maintenance facilities are running the stop sign at the intersection or making a left turn from Ala Eki Street onto Waava Road. The constituent recommended HPD enforcement specifically during the afternoon rush hour and during the lunchtime hour, when students and faculty are done with their classes, or to add a speed hub a few feet before the stop sign and along Ala Eki Street straightaway due to speeding. Motors on the east side of Ala Eki Street has a stop sign due to the petition crosswalk or motor some, Waava Road has a right of way to make a left turn or right turn since there is no stop sign or yield sign. Senator Elefante also emailed HPD, who sent officers out to the area last week and yesterday. HPD issued a total of twelve citations for vehicles running the stop sign and four citations for expired registration and safety checks. They will continue to monitor the area at, as time permits, but recommend to the state highways to consider traffic calming measures like a three-way stop for all directions and our speed tables. I will, with our traffic branch, report back at a future meeting. Uh, this concludes my report, I can take any questions at this time.
Yeah, thank you Casey. Uh, board members, any questions for Casey? Rodney, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for stopping by for looking at that, uh, intersection. Um, yeah, when I, after I made that suggestion and, and then looked at it further, um, you know, I forgot about that there was a double lane, a double right, a left turn lane, uh, going into Home Depot. Um, so I, I figured that would have been a concern. Um, when you look at that double right, that double left lane though, um, I mean, I hate to be mean to the Home Depot guys, but, you know, I don't think there's a, a need for that extra lane for them to turn left. Um, so, I mean, if there is, and, and the bottom line is, you know, you can always try these things and if it doesn't work, then you go back to what was before. But if we don't try it, then there'll be no solution. So that was my, you know, suggestion for the U-turn only lane and then having the two, uh, left turn lanes going up the road there, through the Highlands area. But yeah, I did see, you know, the double, uh, turn lane for going into Home Depot. But, uh, the way I look at it, uh, they're, uh, opposite, their line ain't that much long, uh, it isn't long at all considering what's on the other side. And I would, I, I think, in my opinion, we would drastically reduce the length of that line if we were to undertake this, uh, turn. So, but I do appreciate you taking a look at it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Casey? Seeing none here, any hands, none? Casey, I don't know when you took those photos, they were awful green. Uh, if you go out there to the, uh, the H1 on-ramp going westbound, you'll see grass about three feet tall and it is bone dry. So, uh, hopefully I know that you're, you're, uh, low on resources right here and we're waiting very patiently to get that grass cut. Uh, and also thanks to Senator, Senator Elefante working with you. Uh, I also got those complaints, uh, by Leeward Community College about those guys going through the stop sign. Okay, uh, community, any questions? Uh, hearing none Casey, as always, thank you much.
No problem.
Okay, moving on and we are going to, uh, anybody from Senator Wakai's office? Okay, and we do have Senator Brandon Elefante, welcome sir. As always.
Good evening Chair Verri, uh, Vice Chair.
Good evening, Chair Veray, Vice Chair Duran, members of the Pro City Neighborhood Board and the community. I'm Brandon Alafonte from the State Senate. I want to wish every one of you a happy new year. Uh, joining me this evening, uh, first in person is Faith Quinto. She's my session staff hire. And so if you don't see me during the legislative session, Faith will be here to present the report. Also online is my other two staff members, Jan Salcedo and Taylor Sale. So if we give them a hand, because they do work hard. Thank you so much to my staff for being here. So as you know, session has started. Uh, we are thinking week two of session. Uh, last time that I was here before the board, I shared with you some of my committee assignments. And I do know some of the proposals that you did send uh to us, which we'll be reviewing and we'll take that under advisement and look at that. We thank you very much for sending that. And with the Pro City delegation, we'll have a look to see what we can do to advocate for some of the issues of the board. Um, and then lastly, um, you do have my written report, which is here. And we also sent a copy and it's posted online as well. Uh, we just have some helpful contact information uh for you to be aware about. And finally, um, thank you for that adopting that resolution on the Palisades Emergency Access Road. Rep Takayama and myself are going to be advocating for funding on the state side and working with the State Department of Transportation to look at planning and design for what might be the best feasible option for an emergency access road. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Board members, any questions for our Senator? Go ahead, Rodney.
Oh, Mr. Alafonte, thank you. Um, and thanks for, you know, doing the uh, the emergency access road. I think if we go and we look back um to some of the old photographs, all of the this area, this area in here was all sugarcane land. Um, there are a lot of sugarcane uh hauling roads that were carved into the sides of the mountains. Uh, there's one in uh on Waialua that came from Manana off of Waialua Low Road. So that road actually was an old cane haul road. So if we look at some of the old pictures, there might be some, you know, roads over there that may be considered for an access road. Um, if you take the Mililani Turnoff or the H two Turnoff coming from uh Waikeli side, when you go up, there's all the on the roads on the sides of the bridges. Those are all old cane haul roads. So if you guys look at that way, you might find a a road right over there.
So noted. We'll share that with the agencies.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Seeing none. Community, any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Stay safe, everyone.
Look forward to seeing you in the next two weeks. Okay, moving on, uh, Senator Keno forwarded his report. Anybody online?
Hello, Chair, can you hear me?
Nate, we got you.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair Duran, board members Nathaniel, Nathaniel Lee say representing Senator Keno. Um, like you mentioned, Chair Veray, we did send in the reports this afternoon. And that would be, oh, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Okay, any other que- any questions for Senator Keno? Uh, he is moving that uh, the theft bill for shoplifting. That bill will be going forward. Okay, other than that, uh, board members, nothing. Community, seeing nothing. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, we've got our representative Greg Takayama. Welcome, sir.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Uh, happy to be here. Sorry I missed last meeting. Um, organizationally, um, as you know, we just got underway as a legislature um two weeks ago. Um, my new role is Chair of the House Health Committee. So I have health, you know, uh, things like aging issues on which I work with Representative Chanon, uh, Kupuna issues, um, uh, medical uh care to the aging and the homeless and virtually everyone else in in Hawaii. Um, I'm going to take a stab at fireworks. I know that you're advocating tougher penalties. Um, just so you know that all the aerial fireworks we see, um, they're all illegal and they're all felonies because we've classified any ownership of um of aerial fireworks up to twenty-five, more than twenty-five pounds is a classy felony. Anything less than that is still a misdemeanor. They're all crimes. The problem that we have in trying to enforce the law is that as a crime, the prosecutors have to have evidence. Uh, we've passed laws to try and have photographs, videos, even drone footage admitted as evidence. But they say what they really need is the fireworks themselves. And as we all know, when the police go out to enforce um illegal aerial fireworks, you don't have evidence because they've shot it into the air. Um, so what the governor is proposing to the legislature is actually reducing the penalties from a crime to a violation. And it sounds counterintuitive, but his reasoning and that of the Attorney General is that if you make it a um, a violation like speeding, red light running, then it's easier for the police to enforce. You only need, as a as opposed to um um, a crime where you need um clear evidence of a crime, you just need a preponderance of evidence in violations. Um, in other words, when a policeman drives up and he sees um evidence of you using aerial fireworks with the ashes and uh paper and and the cones discarded, he can cite, uh, he can write a citation right there for two hundred dollars. And the person who receives it can contest it or just pay up. And then the reasoning is that it's much easier to um have the courts enforce it, much easier for the police to um issue citations. So that's what the legislature is considering now and be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for our representative Heidi?
This is along the lines of fireworks, and I'm I'm just wondering, because I I understand the process of bringing it down from a um criminal felony or or whatever it's technically called. Um, have you considered some of the, so we we have fireworks, firecrackers that are legally sold here in Hawaii. Anything from sparklers to bottle rockets to those cakes and everything in between, those are all illegal. Have we considered legalizing some of the small kind stuff? The bottle rockets to make it so that, I mean, the people that want to do this have a way to to do it without going way too far and causing these.
And I heard Councilwoman Okimoto laughing because that's exactly one of the proposals that the city council is or was uh considering. Making non-aerial fireworks, in other words, firecrackers, you know, cracker balls, all the old fashioned like um non-explosive fireworks, uh, legal. As and the theory is being just what you said, that this would be an outlet. Um, there, they have been legal in the past, but at the same time, the use of aerial fireworks just literally skyrocketed and that didn't stop that.
Okay, any other questions, Rodney?
I, and you know, I agree with Heidi, you know, some of the smaller stuff for the kids because they're the ones that are kind of missing out. And I think the problem is, is that everybody thinks they're a pyrotechnic expert. So, you know, with the sparklers and stuff like that, you know, yeah, by itself, it's good. But taped up and wrapped up, it becomes a bomb. And that's what happened to a young girl about ten years ago in Waialua. So sometimes I think, you know, yeah, you know, we pass a resolution and whether or not it's going to stop the influx of fireworks, it's it's, you know, aerials, we don't know. But I think the the thing that needs to be stretched out there, I said, hey, you know what? Maybe we cannot stop you, but try be safe. Don't do anything stupid, you know? For two, three years ago, we had an incident down in Campbell Industrial Park where once again, they thought they were pyrotechnic, you know, experts. Guy lost his wife, made a bomb out of a fire extinguisher, cut his wife right in half. You know, made her li- light it up. So I think we got to stretch that out. But I'd like, you know, to wear it, you know, you hand out that ticket. And maybe you got to jack up that amount a little bit, you know what I mean?
Maybe, um, I I say three hundred dollars, that's for the first violation. It escalates if you get more than one. And, you know, I totally believe that if the fact that six people lost their lives this past New Year's because of what happened on New Year's Eve, then I don't know what else can drive that home.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, we got hand raised there, Val.
Aloha, thank you. I have a question. I just want to know, like, you know, handing out the violations, you still would have to physically see them light it, correct? Because that, I mean, that is the issue right now with catching people because you don't physically see them light it, but how you say there's ashes in the middle of the road and I've got thirty neighbors around me. Who do I blame? Do I cite everybody there, like group of association? Or does it have to physically be the person lighting it and you have to be seen? You know what I mean?
Well, my suggestion is the state law enforcement unit that is trying to enforce this uh fireworks law actually has a hotline for people who want to anonymously um tip them to uh people in your neighborhood who might be using it. And I don't have the number with me right now, but if you look up the state law enforcement um website, it it does have a number. And you can also call nine one one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions from the community? All right, Representative Takayama, I look forward to see you also in the next two weeks. Take care. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we've got Representative Cory Chun.
Hey, good evening, board members. Um, happy new year. So Cory Chun, uh, represent District Thirty-five. Um, you have my written report, so you know, I just wanted to reiterate, we are, that my colleague shared, we are just starting our new session. Um, I do have community assignments I kind of mentioned before, but just to refresh everyone, you know, I now I'm the Vice Chair of the Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce, and I also sit on the Health Committee and the Human Services and Homeless Committee. So it's it's good to see Representative Takayama here because actually, when I left to come to the meeting, I was still talking to him about health bills, so glad he was able to get away from the Capitol. Uh, but going on to fireworks, you know, one of the things, you know, Pearl City in Maipou is always ground zero for fireworks. So one of the things that people have always contacted me about and their concerns is that we can keep increasing penalties, but unless it's enforced, what they really want to see is uh more enforcement. So one of the things I've been trying to do, kind of like um going along with the theme about how drones are very useful. Um, I've always thought that drones and unmanned aerial devices can help to use as surveillance for illegal fireworks. Um, come to find out that law enforcement is very hesitant to use it because of um a Supreme Court ruling back in twenty seventeen regarding aerial surveillance. So this session, I introduced House Bill five fifty. And the purpose behind that bill is to uh, the part one, I guess, is to allow law enforcement to use drones to enforce the fireworks uh law, but specifically just over public property and only to aid in the arrest of an act committed on public property such as a sidewalk, a street or a easement. And the reason for that is because we all know these fireworks are going off on the street level. People don't really light them off in their backyard. And it's really hard to catch them, right? Because the the two things that we know are one, you either have to testify against your neighbor, which I've talked to many people, and that's no matter how much they hate fireworks, they don't want to take that step and have to appear in court and actually be the witness that testifies against their neighbor. Well, the second thing as well as mentioned before is you have to, the law enforcement official actually has to catch somebody lighting it off. Even if they're there after the scene and they're sweeping up the debris, that's not enough. So really, the only the only solution is trying to get some kind of video evidence that can be used. And I truly believe that drones is the way to do it. So hopefully, you know, there's going to be a lot of discussion about that. Um, and I just want to see if whether or not drones can really be, help be a deterrent or not. So, um, you know, it's a long uh session. We're still in the the early parts, but hopefully, we can get some support on that and just try to understand the challenges with using drones. But um with that, I'll, you know, I know it's getting late, so um, rest on that and take.
Thank you, Representative Chun, and and to our legislators, uh, if you could, if you please give us a heads up. And normally, when I find out that there's an important bill that we need to provide testimony, it's usually like the day before, and we need a little more head time. Seventy-two hours is what I'd like. But if you give us a heads up that your bills are coming forward, uh, you know, we'll do our best to review and then provide testimony as necessary. Board members, any questions for our representative?
Not a question, but Gonghiwa choi, man. Happy uh Chinese New Year tomorrow. You're a snake. Figure since you're the Chinese one, we'll give it to you.
And I will say, so I I did talk to uh Chair David Tarnas, who's the Chair of the Committee on Judiciary and Line Affairs, which is going to handle all the fireworks legislation. And he's planning to hear all the proposals on on one hearing day. So on one day, you know, one hearing notice, you'll have all of the fireworks ones. Yeah, so it'll be all together. So, you know, you can just go down the line and speak on every single one. So I don't know when that's going to happen, but you know, that's that's his plan.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, House Rep Chun? Yep. Happy new year to you too.
Hi.
Um, question, uh, when you say drones, are you are you talking um about military-grade drones? Because I mean, that's all they use in the Middle East and wars and so forth like that. And I mean, you you see him take a picture of a cigarette box, right? So are you looking at that level or?
Yes, well, so I don't know. I'm not a really a, don't know exactly all the technology, but I do know the military actually has drones that can actually, if you fire a gun and the drone is in the air, it can trace the exact location to where that that bullet was shot. So I know the technology exists. I don't know if that's the sophistication that we need for um, you know, law enforcement to enforce our fireworks laws. But I know there's technology out there that does exist that could aid in it.
Well, the danger, I think, is that, you know, the, if you're flying the drone that low and you don't have that type of technology, I mean, they're going to shoot down the drone. Just saying, yeah. Don't don't go to war without bullets, you know?
Yeah, that's true. And there there are also possibly um privacy concerns that may come up, so I'm awa- I'm aware of that.
Uh, well, you did mention only uh public areas, right, like the streets and so forth, right? So, I mean, if they, if you, you know, taking a look at the street, then yeah, you open game.
That's true. That's that's the understanding that I have.
All right, any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Community, seeing none. Representative Chun, thank you so much. And again, see you in a few weeks.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Representative Trish Lachica, are you there?
Aloha.
There she is. Aloha.
Hear me? Hi, everyone. Good evening, um, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Apologies, I can't be there right now, but childcare is very difficult for us at the moment. Um, but happy new year to all of you. Um, I just sent out um just a couple hours ago my newsletter, and I also just um pasted it here in the chat. Um, so hopefully, um, Neighborhood Board Assistant um Anson Wu can upload it with um in the Google Drive, but it's also on my website, uh, reptrishlachika.com. Um, wanted to share that um this year, um, you know, we are, um, as part of a, you know, for the House, we are very excited to be uh celebrating our first um female speaker of the House, um, Nate Akamura. Um, she's the first um female speaker in um our state's history and the very first um Asian and Pacific Islander um uh woman to be um speaker in the nation. So that's a quite a big deal. Um, I am also excited to share that um I get to serve as a member of the House Leadership Team this year as part as the Assistant Majority Floor Leader. So just a little bit more um responsibilities in supporting our leadership team as well as some responsibilities when it comes to um bill review, bill referral, um, and just caucus support. Um, wanted to also share just a couple of things in the newsletter. We, um, it's important for me to get your feedback. So we have a cost of living affordability um and cost of living survey that I encourage um folks to. so we have a cost of living affordability and cost of living survey that I encourage folks to respond to. Can take a QR code and takes you there online. And then I see Val here, but her staff and team from Kealaho, West Oahu have been really great. I did host a site visit last Friday at the Kipapa Gulch homeless encampment with the US Army Garrison Hawaii. We have the new Garrison Commander, Hawaii Department of Transportation, State Highway Division. We also had HPD and just, everybody just coming together, multiple stakeholders to address fine comprehensive solutions for the unauthorized encampments over there. So, an ongoing thing that we're working on, just not on our newsletter, but just something I wanted to mention is that, as you all know, it's, you know, in the news as of this morning, is that, you know, President Trump, President Trump did issue a directive halting, temporarily halting federal aid as of twelve PM Hawaii time. And so, this means that there's a pause in the distribution of federal funds, and this will greatly affect several of our state agencies, and it just creates a lot of uncertainty. And, you know, Governor's team, Lieutenant Governor, the executive branch was quick to just brief us, both the House and the Senate today, and they will continue to monitor the situation and give us unbriefing. But just wanted to let you know that, you know, our, your, us, your representatives, you know, Rep Chun, Senators Elefante, Rep Takayama, Senator Sakino, Senator, we're all here to just help, just do everything that we can to make sure that, you know, those who need our help and services the most, you know, you know, we do what we can to protect, to protect our communities who'll be affected. So, we're still waiting to hear what the impact would be, but just so you know that we, we are monitoring the situation. But it is, it is very concerning for all of us.
Okay, Representative Lachica, thank you very much for the updates, and we look forward to supporting the bills that you got going forward. And give, again, please give us a heads up when those are gonna be coming up for those hearings. We'll do our best to try to, especially the really important ones, to maybe even come in person for the presentation, for the testimony. Board members, any, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Chair, I did wanna mention, I just forgot. I know that e-bikes has been an issue for this Neighborhood Board, so I am sitting on the House both. I serve as the Vice Chair for the House Committee on Education, but I'm also on the Higher Education, the Housing, and the Transportation Committee. So, I know on February fourth, we will be hearing several of the e-bicycle regulation bills. So, there will be several bills relating to just regulating the use of e-bicycles, looking at minimum age, looking at enforcement. So, encouraging folks when the agenda comes up for next week, Tuesday, to take a look, and hopefully, folks, even as individuals, can submit testimony. So, thank you. Thank you, Chair. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Go ahead, Dan.
All right, yes. But the, I, Representative Lachica, I appreciate your interest in busing, but I, I think the bills that you've introduced and the other ones that I've seen really don't have the muscle to force the kind of coordination that, that we really need. In other words, you had a much more comprehensive bill last session, and I don't, I don't see it in, in, in this session. So, I wondered if maybe some of the, the other bills could be amended or something to, you know, address some of the issues that we see in the, in the Pearl City area.
Right, so the two bills that I introduced this session, one is a reintroduction of the ability for the Hawaii Department of Transportation to grant exemptions for DOE to use alternative vehicles for student transportation services, so motor coaches, mini buses, vans. So, that is a reintroduction of a bill last year that I worked with Hawaii Department of Transportation on as a draft. And then over the interim, over several months, I did meet with all the school bus vendors on Oahu. So, Roberts Hawaii Grounds Transportation, Grounds Transport, Inc., Solder Home Bus, the ones that provide the smaller buses, and, you know, Department, the Department of Education. And what we really found is that it really is on the contract. And so, the other bill that I introduced actually really looks at how Department of Education puts, I guess, treats the school bus transportation contract. And so, it writes into the statute what should be required in those, in that contract. So, it really treats school bus transportation as critical infrastructure now, whereas before, it's optional for the department. And so, it just puts additional requirements, which includes the ability for the department and the contractors to work, you know, provide some compliance, some communication to the community, because at the end of the day, yeah, it is community that gets affected. But I think if you put that into the requirement as part of the contract language, that's where we've identified that, you know, could be the, the best pathway. But as, as anything, you know, every, there's anything can always be improved, and so encourage folks to provide any, yeah, any opportunities to improve the bills during the testimony process.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I've downloaded, I think, seven bills related to busing, and I'll study them, and I think that critical infrastructure does address the issue. And also, I'll raise, when, when the city officials get here, I'll, I'll, I'll raise the issue there because they have, they have a role too, which is not being adequately performed. Thank you.
Okay, now, board members, any other questions? Seeing none. Community, none. Representative Lachica, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you in the next few weeks. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the city, Mr. Gina Bono, I don't, I don't think he has a representative. He told me he couldn't make it tonight, but we do have our council member Val Okamoto, who's been waiting very patiently. And thank you, ma'am. We know childcare is tough, but, but thank you for being here for us tonight.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me? Okay, good evening, Chair Hary, Vice Chair Duran, and members of the board here in person, as well as online and members of the committee. Councilmember Val Akino Okamoto from District Eight, happy to be here in person. You both, you have in front of you both my December newsletter as well as this January, because I know in December, the board's recess, but I wanted you to receive just the update that we had over the holidays as well. I also have, this was provided on the table, this gives the council information. So, on it, there's our schedule, our committees, as well as full council dates, and information on the council members and our respective committees. The Honolulu City Council held its last regularly scheduled monthly meeting up until tomorrow's one, on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and we honored a former Speaker of the House, my mentor and colleague, both in the House and here with the council, Councilmember Calvin C. And I was really grateful to be a part of that. He has decades of public service. Although I'm really sad that he is no longer my colleague, I, I am looking forward to, you know, communicating with him. He continues to be a mentor. The one, the one benefit that came out of that is that we, we were able to add to our team one of his, members of his team who is online with us tonight, and that's Mrs. Poa Smith Kauhane. So, she's with us, and you will be seeing her probably coming to the board meetings either online or in person. She has experience with the NCO. She served, or she worked for the NCO in the, in the past. And she has included online the, some links to my newsletter, as well as information on real property tax deadlines and schedules, and also a schedule on complete streets. And so, thank you, Poa, for being here with us. A little bit shorter than the previous representatives. We, we did have our, our City Council inauguration, which is, which was held on January second, and the re-elected, as well as the one newly elected council member, they were sworn in. And I was grateful, I had the honor of having our Chair Hary there as one of my guests. So, thank you for taking the time to come and be there with me that day. And with the new year, as you will find this in the pamphlet that was provide, that is provided, but I am currently gonna continue to be the Chair of Public Safety. The committee is a little bit different now. It's Public Safety and Customer Services, so that's a new committee. And I am currently the Vice Chair of the Committee on Planning, Infrastructure, and Transportation, and I will serve as a voting member on the Committees of Zoning, as well as Innovation, Technology, and Entertainment, and International, and Legal Affairs. But because there's just nine of us, we pretty much sit on or are involved in all of the committees at some point or another. We did have committees two weeks ago, so just to give you a quick update, and just so you know, tomorrow is our monthly full council meeting, so after this, I may have to leave because we will be discussing these measures, and that was posted, the agenda's been posted. But Bill fifty-two, which was fifty-two twenty twenty-four relating to electronic, electric e-bikes, is being amended and passing through. I did have a resolution twenty-five dash twenty-five. I'm sorry, I did have a resolution previously at the end of last year that passed through, and that was to work with the state legislature, urging them to work on e-bike classifications and how we can address that issue that is right now plaguing all of our communities. So, as that moves through, that's gonna go through tomorrow. There was a resolution twenty-five dash twenty-five requesting, requesting the city administration to submit the updated twenty twenty-five local hazard mitigation plan to the city council. That's also on the agenda as well. And in, two weeks ago, in my Public Safety Committee, we did have an informational briefing to, to get an update on fireworks enforcement for the city and county of Honolulu. We did hear a lot of discussion tonight about it, rightfully so, and there are measures floating around, but I really wanted to get the, we had invited the DLE, the State Department of Law Enforcement, as well as the HPD to attend. Unfortunately, at the last minute, DLE was not able to attend. As you may have heard in the news, they're, they're transitioning leadership. So, Major Mike Lambert, who has been a part of HPD for many years and has been pretty present in our communities, he will be the new director, the new lead of the state DLE. So, he was able to be at that informational briefing. I would encourage you, if you didn't get to watch it, please go back to our city council website. There's committee hearings and there's archive videos. There was a lot of information given in that hearing, and it is really helpful. We will continue to work with them. They're gonna be working both on the city and state level. A lot of the discussion was around definitions. I have been really focused on what we can do to, as I think, as Representative Takayama said, or maybe it was Representative Chun, talking about the enforcement of it. These laws are already in place, but what can we do to enforce them properly? And Major Mike Lambert, who will be heading DLE, he, he talked about a lot of the need to specify definitions and amending that. So, we're working with him, and he will continue to, I think we're gonna be working to get this, both at the city and the state level. I mentioned our full council meeting is tomorrow, and I think I just wanted to kind of follow up on a, a few community concerns that were brought to my office's attention. This morning, actually, Honolulu Police Department conducted a speed or racing enforcement to address a concern that has been affecting the Pearl City community. And this one actually happened, I believe, in the parking lot of where Don Quixote is in that area. I, I might be, might have that wrong. Poa will correct me if I, if I got the location wrong. But there were eighteen arrests, six citations, eleven were referred to the prosecutors. The operation charges consisted of excessive speeding over eighty miles per hour, driving without a valid license, and operating vehicle under the influence on the H one west, Pearl City and Kamiamia Highway and Hikaha Street. So, just to give you an update, that actually happened today. So, thank you for HPD. I know, I don't think I recall hearing them mention that, but they are kinda, you know, do a good job in enforcing what they can to keep our roads and our communities safe. We had a constituent allege that motor vehicles are being parked illegally in the Lu'ehu Place, Kalde Sack, in Pearl City during refuse pickup, and the refuse vehicle was unable to retrieve the refuse bins that were out. So, we have contacted DMF, DMF's Division of Road Maintenance, initiated service request number two one seven three five for the replacement of the faded no parking signs on Lu'ehu Place, and work will be scheduled when resources are available. A constituent alleges motor vehicles are parked illegally along the unimproved sidewalk area at fifteen twenty Ho'olalea Street, specifically on the corner of, of the intersection, on various dates from January third to twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, between the hours of five AM and two thirty PM. District Three officers made checks in the area of fifteen twenty Ho'olalea Street and issued two citations for parking on an unimproved sidewalk. They will continue to monitor the area and take the appropriate enforcement action when violations are observed. We encourage all to call nine one one to report parking violations as this would result in a more expeditious process, a response to the needs being brought to our attention. And finally, a constituent requested the trees trimmed on Ho'olalea Street. The DOF Arbors determined that although no branches appear to pose an immediate public safety concern, maintenance is warranted. Tree work to perform selective pruning is anticipated to be completed by the end of February twenty twenty-five. And I bring this up because a lot of the concerns that come to the, my team and my office is related to these types of things, and we wanna, you should know that we're working as diligently as we can with the respective departments and agencies to make sure that the needs are being heard and addressed in the most timely manner. Finally, I do have a committee, I'm sorry, a community town hall. It was originally scheduled for January sixteenth, but because of conflicts with opening day and other scheduling conflicts, we had that adjusted. So, we are now having the town hall on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, at Highlands Intermediate School from five thirty to seven PM. A flyer will be mailed to everybody in Pearl City soon, but it's also already posted on my social media, and with it is included a survey. We are really asking the members of the community to, to fill out the survey. You can do it electronically. There's a QR code, or when the mail, when your mailer comes in the mail, it should be coming out in the next couple of weeks. You can mail that in, whichever you prefer. But that really helps us as we, we don't have a legislative session. We are in session all year. So, as we're going through the year, we wanna make sure that we're hearing the community's concerns. I really appreciate the work that you guys are putting on with resos and letting us know what your needs are. I know I won't over time, but I come here quarterly in person, so I wanna make sure that I get to share everything that I have hoped to share. I'm glad they take any questions at this time.
Councilmember Okamoto, thank you so much, and it, it means a lot to us when you show up in person, and thank you for those updates. Just one quick thing, I did correspond with Director Abano in regard to the continuing problem that we have for Pearl, Pearl City Highlands Elementary School. The parents that line up on No'olani Street as they make a right turn on Waimano Home Road, that, that particular corner area is, I could just, it, it actually blocks traffic where you can't get cars through that are going westbound or wanna make a left turn to go towards Monlo Road. But the, the solution to that is put a sign up. Nobody's gotta park there during those hours that are reflective of the parents picking up their, either dropping off their kids or picking up their, their children in afternoons. So, that really needs to get fixed.
That will, and I had just met with Director Abano today, earlier in a Zoom meeting. I believe we will have to work with BTS also. They, they do traffic studies based on the flow of cars and, and all that. And then the request for the signs will, I believe, go to DFM, but we'll follow up on that. If Poa, I'm sure she took note of that. Can you repeat the, the street, Chair? The, the school and the streets that are being affected that you just mentioned?
Yeah, that's, that's the corner of No'olani. It's the westbound flow, making a right turn on Waimano Home Road, and just a quarter of a block is Highlands Elementary School.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, okay, moving on to board members. Dan, go ahead, followed, followed by Heidi.
Yes, usual questions here. So, I, I think we could have some, need some follow-up on the, with the traffic people on the study of Waimano Home Road and Comomai, the left turn and the packing up. Again, somebody mentioned earlier, you try, there, there ought to be some, you know, things to try out with, you know, policemen and see how it works. The other thing is school busing, I think the, the school, the, the bus system has made some adjustments for Pearl, for Pearl City High School, but there still needs to be more coordination between the schedules. Just very minor adjustments would mean that, that there would be connections, for example, from the fifty-four to the fifty-three and, and then the, the shuttles, then the timing, very small adjustments and coordination would, would help. And also, a little state action for the, for the school buses.
Correct. So, for the city buses, you want us to follow up on the schedule and the time limits of fifty, fifty-four and fifty-two? Is that what?
Well, right, the fifty-four connecting with the, with the fifty-three and in the afternoon, in the afternoon. But again, and I'm urging students to, you know, get involved too, because they can, they can solve it. But, you know, the, I guess the DOE is buying bus passes, so there is a revenue thing. And then, as I said, the bus has stepped up, some bigger buses and some increased frequencies, but there's- But there's still a lot, a lot more that that can be done.
Okay, we will follow up on that with DTS, OTS, or I guess not with DTS, to see what the scheduling is like and how it can be adjusted. Thank you.
And and of course, have bus service back actually to Pearl City High School.
Yeah, that's a hard one.
Go to the auditorium.
That's a harder one, but we will, I'll have my team follow up on that. That, from what I understand, and I've shared this before, that's been an ongoing thing prior to me being in any seat in public office. But I I hear conflicting stories about why that's a thing or not a thing. And so we'll have to follow up and I I don't have an answer for that one.
Sure.
I'm currently told that what's happening, what what we have in place is what was going to take place and we'll try to see what we can work on with the scheduling.
The principal did come here and say, yes, I am in favor of the bus returning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Heidi.
Hi. Chair. Sorry, this is also regarding the bus. I was hoping to bring it up to Jean's attention. But on Wa'Mano Home Road, at, I believe it's bus stop nineteen sixty-seven, which is the Como Mai Wa'Mano Home bus stop. There is no sidewalk, a typical sidewalk, but there is a paved section between the roadway and the retaining wall for those homes. The bus is pulling up into that footpath area. And I've talked to the drivers because I do walk my kids to school down that side of the road. And then I walk home afterwards, or we ride our bikes, or they're riding their bikes to their friends' houses. And I've spoken to several of the bus drivers and asked them to please not do that because they're pulling up onto a sidewalk, even though it's not a raised sidewalk. And I was told that that was to help with traffic flow. But a bus pulling over two, three feet is not helping traffic flow in any way. I saw one bus today that was pulled over that way. My daughter was in the car with me. And I just mentioned it to her, you know, that the bus was over on the the footpath again. And she told me that not too long ago, she was riding home. And she was on her bicycle. She doesn't have an e-bike. She has a regular bicycle.
Thank you.
And she was coming up that way. And the bus was pulled over so tight that she could not get through with her bicycle. And she saw the bus driver. It's a terminus, so they do park there for however long between the bus routes that they have. The bus driver was inside the bus on the cell phone, taking a break. She had to go around the bus on the traffic side where the traffic was coming down Wa'Mano Home Road. So she had to find her way around this giant bus, sticking her head out to try and find a way to get around it. The bus driver did nothing. And she told me this story about two hours before this meeting. And I called the bus to report it, but I'm absolutely livid that my child was put in that situation. And I would really appreciate help because I have called them repeatedly to tell them that their drivers are parking there on the split path.
Thank you for sharing that. I agree with you. That's, as a parent myself, I would not want that for my child.
And I have not gotten a response. I've asked them to contact me. I've left my name and number and I'm not getting anything done.
We'll follow up. Can you remind me? So it's Wa'Mano Home Road and exactly what part, what part of Wa'Mano Home Road are you talking about? And it's going up or coming back down?
Above Como Mai.
Above, oh, above Como Mai. Okay.
It's right there. It's, the bus stop is considered the Wa'Mano Home Como Mai bus stop.
Okay.
It is between Como Mai and Ma'ihia Circle.
Okay, Como Mai and Ma'ihia Circle.
Uphill, it's on the left side, yeah.
And they're parking, and so there is no designated lane for them?
And sidewalk, but there is, there used to be a white line for the edge of the road. That's no longer there.
Okay.
But it is, you can see that there's a small lip, if you will, change in the pavement. There is a bus stop with a bench and a rubbish bin. So obviously, it's expected that pedestrians would be traversing that area.
So this, in this case, that was it for a bus stop where people were coming on and off? This was just the buses parked and probably taking a rest?
It's a, it's a terminus, so whenever they get there early, they wait and start the next. But even when they do pull over to discharge passengers or pick up passengers, they're pulling up onto that.
Okay, I'll have, we'll have to follow up on that. And sorry about, yeah, I would be concerned as well. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, council member, your your assistant, who was? She's got some input.
Oh, this is Poa from Councilmember Sei's office.
Okamoto's office.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Okamoto's office. See, I'm so, I'm so new, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Board member Heidi, is it possible for you to send us pictures of that area? So you can send it to my email and we can look at it and put a riser, a request for investigative services for that. I would really appreciate it because the pictures will work, are worth it so that DTS, the Department of Transportation Services, can actually look at that and investigate. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, all right, moving on. Guy.
I'm sorry. Chair.
Are you still heads up? Think you use the mic.
It's part of fixing that whole intersection there. And the the whole traffic flow and and she's right, Heidi is right about the parking there. But we need, we need some real attention there. Thank you.
Okay, and I remember Lee showed me where on the map it is. I took a screenshot. But yeah, member, if you could take any pictures, that would be really helpful if you can get out there and just show us exactly where it is. It's really helpful when we submit the the request into the respective department. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Guy.
Hi, you know, the, I brought this up before, the crosswalk at Nanakai and Wa'Mano Home Road. I was kind of wondering when that crosswalk will be removed as part of the Smart Street program. That was over four years ago.
So crosswalk of Wa'Mano Home Road and what was the other?
Nanakai.
Nanakai, okay.
Right.
Have to follow up. I know, like, I think I mentioned, Poa had put in the list, the schedule for complete streets, but we'll have to follow up specifically. You said that that's been four years now?
Over.
Over four years?
Right. I mean, you know, when this Smart Streets was consummated, right?
And the reason, usually we're getting requests to put crosswalks in. The reason for this to be removed, if you could remind me, is there's no light. Oh, okay.
Well, because, I mean, if you're coming down thirty-five miles an hour and somebody steps into that crosswalk and they happen to be going about thirty, thirty-five miles an hour in the corner of Monlo Road and Wa'Mano Home Road, and if they're coming down, going southbound on Wa'Mano Home Road, there's no way they're going to be able to stop.
Okay, we'll follow up. Thank you.
They're going to get hit. And then, I mean, yeah, don't, don't try it, but yeah, I mean, just, just kind of like monitor that area. You'd be surprised how fast they're coming down Wa'Mano Home Road.
Yes, okay, I can imagine. Thank you.
Okay, board members, I don't see any other hands up. Community, any questions for our council member? See you none. Thank you very much.
Chair, thank you.
Okay, and we've got, moving on to our other agencies, we got Joint Base Pearl Harbor, Ickham, with Doona Hodge and Victor Flint and their guest.
Good, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Thanks again for the opportunity to give you a Navy closure task force update. Nothing but good news. Right now, we're in the middle of preparing an operational update. Over the next few days, we're getting an operational update that'll, that'll cover all the recent developments since the holidays, anyway. Now, right now, as a reminder, we cleaned the tanks in pairs. So seven and eight, right now, they've started pressure washing. Five and six, they've removed a bunch of sludge. Altogether, within the six tanks that have been touched right now, we've got one hundred and fifty-eight gallons of sludge, which sounds like a lot, but remember that we were estimating up to two thousand gallons per tank. So one hundred and sixty-eight gallons for six tanks is pretty good. We're happy with that. Three and four right now are being prepared for de-gassing and the ventilation. And as a reminder, we always watch our air quality monitoring for the surrounding areas to make sure that everything stays below the EOC limits. Most of my work right now is getting ready for the twelve March open house, which is going to be over at West Bunnels Hall at Kehe Lagoon. I can never say Kehe Lagoon. I'll say it right one of these days. And then reminder that all the latest news and updates are on our dashboard, on our apps, on our websites, all the good news and everything. You can read all the latest. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris. Chris comes to us from Navy Region Hawaii. She's the Deputy Director of Public Affairs and you'll start seeing more of her.
Welcome, welcome, Chris. Thank you, Doona.
I'm sure, okay. Okay, Heidi, that's good. Can everyone hear me? Good evening, Chair, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. You have our reports, so I'll keep this really short. Just some things I wanted to highlight. We had a very successful Hokulea visit last week. This was the second time that Hokulea sailed into Pearl Harbor and docked at Rainbow Bay Marina. We had a really good response from the community. The Hokulea crew did tours and talks with the community, especially for kids. So second time Hokulea was here, we are so pleased to host her. We will be getting, actually, we started monthly ship tours. So these are tours of ships that are docked at Pearl Harbor. They're small group tours of about twenty people. But if anyone has an interest in attending one of these tours, and we don't know what ships yet, but we will be doing them throughout the year. If you are interested, please reach out to me and we will get you on the list. We concluded our first one this Saturday with the Navy League. So it was a really good response from them. We are also starting our Pearl Harbor ship tours, our Pearl Harbor white boat tours. So these are the big white boats that tour Pearl Harbor. We have our Navy historian narrating the tour. It is after hours and it's a really special tour because you get to, you know, learn about the history of Pearl Harbor. But also, we stopped at the Arizona. And, you know, it it is close to the public by that time, and so you're able to spend, you know, some quiet time at the Arizona. Our historian does provide an overview of the of the Arizona Memorial. And then we bore the white boat and we returned to the Pakfleet Boathouse. So our next one is coming up in February, late February. Again, if there's any interest in that tour, please let me know. That tour or that boat holds a hundred and fifty people. So, you know, large tours, if you have school groups or community organizations or if you yourselves would like to join that tour, please reach out to me and we can get you on the list. And we do those about, we're shooting for every month, but probably looking at every other month. And then a couple of things. In the report, we did mention the draft EIS, and this is for the Hawaii California Training and Testing EIS. And this EIS looks at the impacts to the area offshore of Hawaii and California. We did hold public meetings on this island and Kauai. And the draft EIS is still available for review and public comment on the website through February eleventh. So if you are interested in seeing that, please take a look. And then finally, we sent out a press release on Friday announcing that Navy Region Hawaii, Naval History and Heritage Command and Naval and the National Park Service are working with key stakeholders to coordinate preservation work on the USS Arizona Memorial. In two thousand and twenty-three, we discovered that one of the platforms had collapsed. And so we are working with federal, state and local stakeholders to develop a plan to repair the platform. In the meantime, the Arizona Memorial is safe and open to the public. And we will update you as more progress on that planning is made. And that's it for me. Any questions before I turn it over to Vic?
Chris, thank you so much. If I can put in a request for our board. If the board agrees with me, we'd like to go onboard the USS Danannoy. When she's back aboard again, I think that's very special for everyone here for what he's done for Hawaii these years. But but of course, all the ships, they all have great names and reputation and great crews. And we're glad that they're protecting us right now. But last night Congressman Case, one of the things he mentioned, the the largest dry dock and most expensive this US has right now is going on at Pearl Harbor. I'm glad to see that's going very well, too. So board members, any questions for Chris? Okay, see you none.
Thank you.
Just very briefly. I know you have the Pearl Harbor, you know, military community has boats and stuff and they go sailing around. If if I were to put in my kayak down here, is it okay to paddle or paddle around Pearl Harbor or? What are the, well, what are the rules about that?
The answer's no.
Yeah.
So, but but why, but but military people can paddle around out there and sail around, but civilians can?
Yeah, you're gonna have to wait there, Dan. So Chris, since you're just coming onboard, this board has introduced some resolutions in the past. And then regretfully, I found out after the fact that some of them never made it to leadership. We generated, we approved them and they never went anywhere. But we've got one that Senator Wakai and I are trying to set up a meeting. We're just trying to find the right time, right place. But it's a request from the Pearl City Neighborhood Board to look at the feasibility of developing a public recreation area off Blaisdell Park here in Pearl City. And basically, it would be a controlled, restricted area if the Navy could give us some water. And it'd be just like Rainbow Bay Marina, except that have the the city parks designate a vendor to have paddle boards, canoes, kayaks, those kind of things, and their own security to make sure that the buoy area that would be restricted area, that's where the public would have to be in. So we, we have a resolution. We were setting up a meeting, but we ended up canceling it because we didn't think it was the right people. The the other one is has to do with 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 the parks. One of the things is there's just so much to remember from the attack of Pearl Harbor. But but it's been brought to my attention by the shipyard workers of Pearl City. Many have come to me saying that they would really like to see something special down at the Arizona Memorial Visitor Center designated strictly a kiosk for the shipyard workers and what they did to get our ships back at sea again. And there was many that volunteered that they have a lot of memorabilia that they would donate. So that resolution never went anywhere. So I I ran into a Parks rep yesterday at Congressman Case's, his town hall yesterday. And I'm going to try to work that route, but I will make sure that you you all are involved in these things that are coming up and try to get those meetings together.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
So board members, any other questions? Okay, go on.
Are there any concerns regarding budget with new administration? With regard to dry dock, with regard to whatever we're doing with Red Hill and everything? There's grave concern by tons of people in Pearl City, especially with the clownish appointment of Pete Hegseth. I think the lowest ever as far as being approved by the Senate. And we have projects that need to be finished that are affecting tons and tons of people. There was mention about a website. You guys aren't under any orders to stop any of the outgoing communications and stuff like that from the the state DOD. They were told that they should be stopping, so I'm curious to find out.
Yeah, as far as the funding, we have not been given any notification regarding funding for ongoing projects.
Let me rephrase. The question is, with regard to ongoing work, work that likely should have been done decades ago, specific to Red Hill, are we in jeopardy of having that work stopped, delayed because of new administration?
Business as usual. The closure of Red Hill. Question has come up internally inside of our office. We've been told, march on. As far as websites, websites are different than social media. And the social media accounts were all frozen and all the posts and things like that. But the websites continue to with all the information. There's another good website.
I'm here.
There's another good website, Divids Defense Video. That's where a lot of the news stories are always posted. And that's a, that's a way to kind of receive the news, even though the social And that's a, that's a way to kind of, uh, receive the news even though the social media accounts are down. Does that make sense? Divids. I'll pass that to you, uh, Chair Veray later on, uh, and we can pass that out to the constituents. Because that's a great, uh, news source for everybody. You don't have to have a military account to visit that website.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add one thing about social media. Uh, we are continuing to write updates. Um, you know, regarding operations, critical operations, emergency notifications. We still are, um, posting that information on our social media channels.
Right, thank you. Victor.
Good job.
Ole Makahikiho, Kako. Victor Flint, Public Works. That horrible January first firework incident fed fire. Advanced Life Support Units came to assist Tona Lufa Department and EMS with, uh, taking care and transporting and stabilizing the burn patients and the frag problems that they had with the explosions. Also, on January fourth, we, uh, medevac six patients along with thirty medical staff on our large C seventeen medevac aircraft to Arizona to the burn clinic over there. And I'm, I'm happy we were able to step up and, and help. So, that's with that. Um, brother Guy, Guy, the Pearl Harbor Restoration Advisory Board, the last meeting was December eleventh. Next one coming up is April sixteenth. And that last one was pretty crowded. It was kind of maxed out, about sixty. It was a very, very good meeting. And Dry Dock Five, moving forward in December, they had the third core of the nine-part concrete floor. This month, they're wrapping up the fourth core of that concrete floor. Once all the nine parts are finished and fabricated, they'll be barged to the shipyard. So there shouldn't be any impact on our local traffic and goodness. And that's all I have. And I hope there's no question.
All right. All right, Rodney.
Thanks, Dad.
Keep it short.
Um, my son recently enlisted into the Marines. So, yeah, so thank you. While on the base on the vertigo, so, okay. Anyway, they had some lovely crosswalk signs that were illuminated with lights going around it. Triangular lights powered by a solar panel on top of it. Where'd you get them from? We'd like to put a couple up here in Pearl City.
I tried that a decade ago.
Get your source.
Need the microphone, guys. But he can't hear you.
Have a question?
Yeah, Victor.
Hey, board members, any other questions for the Navy? Guy, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, so Victor, in terms of the RAB, you know, the last meeting, actually, uh, they reviewed the, uh, bylaws and so forth. So we ended up making in, in, in terms of, um, uh, making sure that the bylaws and, you know, charges and procedures are amended. And at that point, then I'll, I'll be reporting, uh, uh, I think our next meeting is in February, March timeframe, so.
Do you have a copy of everything? Because we just got the copy of the, of who was there and what was discussed and, uh, and what was presented. Do you need any of that?
Uh, yeah, email it to me. Um, they, they did upload the, um, I think the, uh, second amended version to, uh, to the Google site. So that I downloaded. But in terms of, uh, any kind of minutes of that meeting, no. Yeah. So if you could please send it to me, I appreciate that.
Will do.
All right. Well, thank you so much for giving us time and the updates. And, uh, Chris, hope to see you next month. All right. Thank you. All right, moving on. Uh, I have us in contact with Chancellor Niloza. He's hosting, uh, the UH Chancellor today. So he not be able to make it. Uh, we got Vicky Bowie waiting very patiently. Vicky, go ahead.
Hi, good, good evening. Okay, so for my report, I'm just gonna, uh, mention a few things. First off, we're gonna be closed on February four, Tuesday, uh, for our library staff training and development. And this is actually, all the Oahu libraries will be closed that day. Um, uh, if you want to find out more information about that, you can go to our website. And we'll also be closed for President's Day on Sunday, the February sixteen and Monday, February seventeen. We're also gonna be having, um, Honolulu Theater for Youth, Musubi Man. He'll be coming, well, we'll be having their performance at our library on Friday at two thirty. And we continue to have our, um, our Storytime every Thursday in the morning at ten thirty. And we're also doing, um, Beginner Tai Chi every other Wednesday on February twelve and February twenty-six. We also have other li, uh, other library programs, but I'm not gonna mention all of them here. It's not enough time, I think. So if you're interested in any of our programs, you can check out our website, librarieshabaie.org, or come to the library and you can, um, collect a, a calendar and see what's going on. And that is my report.
All right, Vicky, thank you so much. Uh, board members, any questions for Vicky? Go ahead, Dan.
Uh, yes, um, uh, some of us, uh, would be, uh, like to get more information on the, on the history of Pearl City and, 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 uh, various neighborhoods, including Palisades. So I guess we should, uh, come by your shop and, uh, see what, see what we can learn.
There have been a couple of local history books written, uh, one by the Pearl City, uh, I think it was Pearl City High School did one, uh, was a, a manana. And there is another book about the Pearl City Library. It's a, um, a walkthrough by a former librarian, Arlene Ching. She also wrote a book and she did a video on the history, in conjunction with Lewer Community College, on the history of Pearl City. So if you're interested, you can come down to the library and find out more.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Uh, Guy, go ahead.
Oh, hi, Vicky. Um, you know, we, we met, right, friends at the Pearl City Library with you as well as with the architect. And, um, yeah, if you maybe give a short summary as to the, the plans, uh, looks, looks pretty good, you know? And then the interesting thing is that, um, you'd be moving the parking lot. And actually, the new parking lot will accommodate a little bit more cars as well as, uh, provide a better, a better thoroughfare in terms of drop offs, et cetera, like that. So, um,
That's true. Yeah.
Yeah, looks like it's nice. So if you want to share maybe.
The design, the design has been, uh, pretty much finalized. Uh, we're, I think they're still working on the construction bid. And I'm waiting for our construction schedule. Um, so what people can expect is that there will be a community center in where the current parking lot is. And they're shifting the park into that empty grass lot. There's also gonna be a, a preschool that is gonna be under the, the Office of Early Learning under the Governor's Office. Um, it's part of that whole program. And there's gonna be, uh, a lot of changes, a huge renovation inside the library. They are going to include study rooms and, um, a lot of other details in there. And I, I don't know if I want to be able to describe it in, in words without showing the pictures. But there's, there's a lot of great features that's gonna come in this new renovation. And, you know, we're all looking forward to that. We don't know more details yet as we're waiting for construction schedule. And we're gonna find out more hopefully soon.
Yeah.
And I'll keep, I'll keep the board updated once I find out more.
Right, right. So in the future, maybe you can give us an update, like, uh, um, you know, maybe a ten-minute preview as to, uh, uh, once everything is finalized and then you can stop breaking ground. So thank you very much.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
All right. All right, Vicky, thank you so much. Uh, moving on to Border Water Supply. Arlen.
Thank you, Chair Veray. Good evening, board members and Pearl City community. Those watching on Olelo and everyone, everyone else joining us, Happy New Year. Uh, Arlen Ludwig from Border Water Supply. Last month, there were three water main breaks, uh, on December thirteen. Eight-inch water main break near four eighty, Honolulu Street. On December twenty-nine, eight-inch water main break near twenty-three thirty-eight, Anini Place. And on December thirty-one, eight-inch water main break near thirteen twenty-six, Nanakai Street. Uh, the Border Water Supplies Water Wisdom Program offers tools to help customers conserve water and detect leaks. Uh, through this program, you can learn how to perform a home water audit. So you can ensure your fixtures and appliances meet low-flow standards. And you can identify leaks which waste water. Uh, if you go to our website, borderwatersupply.com slash water wisdom, you can watch a short video on conducting your own water audit. Uh, don't forget, you can also pick up a free water audit bag at the Border Water Supplies Public Service Building on South Baritania Street. So let's just make every drop count. And that's the end of my report.
All right, Arlen, thank you so much for the updates. I'm glad we've minimized the, the water line breaks. Uh, board members, any questions for Border Water Supply? Make it quick.
It's working now. Uh, we're talking about a, uh, escape route from Palisades. So we're talking about that, uh, private road that you folks, I think it's according to, uh, Board Member Lee, you got a, a private road there at the end of Waiana. The Pearl City industrial area.
I believe you may be referring to our Waiala two-two-eight reservoir project. Uh, we have an easement. I believe all that property is owned by community schools.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Brendan, for the clarification. Uh, okay, uh, Arlen, thank you so much. Appreciate the updates. We're gonna move on to the last item here before we get to the approval minutes. Tony, any updates on PTSA?
Uh, no updates, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Guy, I missed you. Uh, I didn't see your hand raised. Did you have a question for Arlen?
Uh, no, I just want to, uh, thank, uh, Border Water Supply who did a great job in terms of cleaning up on the corner of, um, Komo Mai Waimea Mono Home Road, you know, after, uh, months of work. And, yeah, that, that dock was, uh, you know, uh, pretty used heavily, et cetera, like that. But, uh, when they, you know, boarded everything up and planted new grass, uh, looks, looks great. So I think they did a great job. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Guy. Okay, Tony, nothing on PTSA correct?
Correct.
Okay, moving on. Last thing I got here, board members, everybody got a chance to review the November twenty-sixth, uh, minutes for twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve? Okay.
Second.
Guy, second. Okay. Uh, if there are no objections, we'll consider him approved. Okay, moving on, uh, for announcements, uh, board members, I'd sure like to see you back for the next term. Uh, please, please, please register as soon as you can. I want to see all you back again. February twenty-first is the deadline. Uh, and then lastly, uh, if you guys, uh, on February eighth, the Pearl City Lions Club is hosting their Valentine's breakfast at, at, uh, the Pearl City High School. If you're not doing nothing, come and join us for breakfast. Other than that, uh, Pearl City Neighborhood Board twenty-one, next board meeting will be hybrid virtual, uh, web, on WebEx, facilitated here at Momilani Community Center. And it'll be on, uh, a Tuesday. Uh, let's see here, I got the wrong date on this thing. It'll be the last Tuesday of February, which is, you know what date that is? The twenty-fifth. And, uh, our Pearl City Board meetings are on channel forty-nine Olelo, second Saturday, six P M, and the first, third Friday. Other than that, board members, thank you so much. A lot of good conversation. Navy, thank you so much. And, and thanks for, uh, Representative Shana hanging around too. This meeting's adjourned.